City Council to order. This is an open meeting. Posted in the northwest corner of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act made accessible to all members of the public. Please stand with us for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Bendike?
Here.
Reader?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
House?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Okay, under action, the consent agenda that was included in your packet, I would ask for item number 11 to be, I need a motion to move this to the regular agenda. If I could, please?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move item number 11 to the regular agenda.
Your Honor, I would move the consent agenda with the exclusion of item 11.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for approval of the consent agenda with item 11 moved. Please vote. All council persons voting in the affirmative. And as well, the full agenda as before you, I would ask for a motion to remove from the regular agenda, item 28, at my request. There's been a little bit of concern on the actual way that we stated this, and we have agreed that we're going to remove this for further review. So if I could have that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to remove item 28, I would ask for approval of the full agenda with that deletion. I'm sorry. If you will, please vote. All council persons voting in affirmative. Okay, I think we're ready to go forward.
I would move the regular agenda with the addition of item 11 from the consent agenda and the exclusion of 28.
All right.
Second.
I don't know if that works, but try.
All right. Please vote. My fault, I thought that's what we were voting on, guys. All council persons voting in the affirmative. All right. Are we ready to go forward now? All right, so do you want to start with 11? Moved over here?
What about public? Oh, yes, and related.
All right. Okay. So, consideration of resolution number 2010-12 approving the final plat of the Kirsten subdivision.
I would move approval.
Okay. We're looking to table this. Okay.
You want it? Oh, okay. Who withdraws my motion?
I'll make a motion to table, Your Honor.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table then, consideration of the resolution 2010-12. Please vote. All council persons voting in the affirmative. Okay. Now let's jump into our public hearings then. First one is a public hearing for discussion regarding the acquisition by the city of an interest in property necessary for West Water Treatment Plant wellfield expansion and protection. I'd like to open the public hearing and look to you, Dennis, to give us information regarding this.
What? I think I'm the culprit. Trying to get a picture up on the screen. This is a property that's out near the West Water Treatment Plant that would provide for 1,000 feet of space between all of our wells. In public hearing tonight, we're dealing with the entire northeast quarter, the northeast quarter of section 25, 24, 2. There's a piece of this property that's actually for sale. There's another piece that would be beneficial to have if it comes on the market in the future, which is the old trailer court. The piece that's for sale is west of the trailer court, but it would provide protection for one of the wells that's right close to the West Water Treatment Plant. Would answer any questions anybody might have about this?
I don't have a question, Dennis, but I do think it's very important, as we talked about the other night when WJGKXO was in here about the land around their tower, we should also do that, as I said, for our water. And I think it's very significant that we keep buying the land to protect our water out there so that we don't have any problems. So I just want to make comment that I support this 100 percent and think that we need to do this every time we get a chance where it's relevant.
We're looking at trying to get that 1,000-foot barrier or buffer, not really a barrier or buffer, around all of our wells.
I think that's important.
Dennis, will this be just a hanging operation then on this land, or?
More than likely. Right now, this year, it's still being row cropped, and we'll probably look, I think we should look long-term trying to get most of our properties into either a hay or a native grass or something that can be left. Our main focus is protection of the wellfield. If we get any income from the property, it's a secondary issue.
Any other discussion?
The option that we have provides that the existing tenant or the existing landlord and the existing tenant gets the 2010 crop. So we won't have control of the land as far as the crop or anything until the 2011 season, regardless of when we actually close on the deal.
Dennis, has there been any discussion with this current tenant, the possibility of maintaining it after the sale?
No, we have not had any specific conversations. For the most part, we have, to the best of our ability, tried to work with the existing tenants and work that, go from there.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none then. I would close the public hearing and look for consideration, or motion for consideration of approval to exercise the option acquired by the city to acquire the property.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just changed, showing you the exact piece of property that is actually being acquired by the option, which is the west half of that priced at $4,500 an acre, which is less than the price we paid just across the way from our access road a couple of years ago.
And that's the trailer court just to the right there?
Trailer court would be right in here, the kind of the treat area. We own everything but, we own everything about that piece right there when we get done.
We'll own everything but that piece?
We'll own everything but that piece.
Okay.
Yeah, we own this already, we own this, we own this. I'm not sure exactly where, I think we may own this little piece right here, but we definitely will not own, or do not and will not own that little piece right there, which was the old trailer court. It is down to one trailer in there, so it's not as much of a threat as it was in the past.
Okay. There is a motion and a second. Are you ready to? No further discussion? I would ask you to please vote. All council persons voting in affirmative. Next is a public hearing at the request of Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation and the Black Hills Nebraska Gas Utility for a zoning change from I-1 to C-2 in the southeast corner of 7th Street and Norfolk Avenue. I'd like to open this hearing and look to you, Scott, for discussion, any discussion on this?
Mayor and council, this request comes before us with the hope and desire to advance this district into C-2. It allows flexibility and ability to set building foot and bring it down by some setback provisions that are west Benjamin, also the option parking funds are west Benjamin. This creates more flexibility to the developer for utilizing the maximum extent of this property. The C-2, as you all know, is consistent with the downtown corridor. There is a portion that was owned by light industrial, probably a direct proportion and direct relation to the railroad activity and those associated businesses near that. So the C-2 would be like the features that we've defined in the board, the downtown, and so the desire, desires of seeking out that change that provides that it's kind of flexibility and creation from your business use, your business office use of that location. So, does that answer any questions you all might have about that?
Counsel, any questions to direct to? Scott?
Scott, so the main purpose of this is just to create some consistency for the chamber building, basically. Where the former Kentucky Fried Chicken property is C-2, this would make that also adjoining C-2.
Any other questions at all, counsel?
Are they planning anything to do in there, Scott, or just continue this zoning down the line?
I've not received any requests from anybody else in the downtown area. This just seemed to better suit the chambers plans for their building there. What often happens, or historically happened, if you look at our map, virtually all over that map, there was an inventory taken of all the uses that were going on. Oftentimes, zoning district was laid over top of what was happening at the time. There were a lot of industrial type uses that occurred as a result of the railroad activity that was strong at that time. The argument could be made that many of those could be transitioned into some other type of district other than I-1 anyway. So obviously, we're moving to a less intense use as less of the pleasantry type uses that could go with it that have noise smell and discomfort to the surrounding property. So it certainly is soft movement to a less intense district that needs all that need. So I haven't heard any negative opposition from anybody in regard to this particular request, so.
Just as a point of clarification, the KFC property is also being rezoned, it's currently industrial.
Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel? This is a public hearing, is there anyone else in the audience that wants to come forward and speak to, they have questions of? If not, I would ask for a Planning Commission report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 18, 2010, for a zone change from I-1, Light Industrial, to C-2, Central Business, at 609 to 613 West Norfolk Avenue, at the request of the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation and Black Hills Nebraska Gas Utility Company in care of Black Hills Corporation. The owners of the parcel, on behalf of the Norfolk Chamber of Commerce, wish to rezone this parcel in the southeast corner of 7th and Norfolk Avenue to relocate their office. The rezoning they request extends the C-2 district from the downtown area and allows no front or side yard setbacks. If the rezone is approved, the owners will then present a final plat for approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the zone change on a six to zero vote.
Okay. I would close this hearing then and ask for a motion changing the zoning from I-1 to C-2, as discussed here.
Your Honor, I would introduce ordinance number 5116 on first reading.
Should I come?
Motion, motion made and seconded for approval of ordinance number 5116. If you will please vote. I'm sorry, we need a short title first.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And now, if you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5116 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move that we suspend the rules on pass ordinance 5116 on second and third. Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules. Again, any discussion, any further conversation? If not, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5116 carries on second and third.
Okay. Do you have anything else Beth and I need to be doing here that we moved? What are you telling me here to do first? Pull from the table? Yep, okay. If you remember, we tabled this item at the May 3 council meeting regarding the consideration of vehicle parking district to form a BID. I need a motion, please, to pull from the table.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion at all?
I guess it's my understanding.
We need a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. And if, we need to first pull it from the table?
And it's already been done.
Yep, and if you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and now we'll look for consideration of the request before us from the vehicle parking district to form the BID. We should have a motion too then? A motion too? To be able to discuss it. Okay, so we need a motion now to be able to discuss.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
With a second. Looking for discussion. We better vote first. No.
No. Want to discuss?
All right. Are we, are we? You're voting to approve, so that's what they need to know. Okay, but are we killing? Vote it down. I see. Okay, so we're going to go for discussion. Who's ready to lead this discussion?
They all else.
I guess, I would, I guess it's my understanding that the folks downtown are looking for a little more time to work on this, and so I guess it would be my request to retable it.
We want to kill it, don't we? Because my understanding is, and Connie maybe will let you look to give us a little guidance on this, there's been further discussion, which is taking us a different territory than what you had originally proposed. And I don't know that that discussion has ceased yet or has been completed yet. So I know your original way of assessing has been talked up in a different manner. So that being, okay, so with that change being made, then my understanding is it would be best if we just actually killed this. We agree to that and let them come back with a new.
I guess my concern.
Why it's desirable to do that is that the whole notice procedure for the formation of the Business Improvement District, like that which is contemplated, has right up front that you're, you're telling those folks that are affected by it or potentially affected by it, what the method is going to be that's going to be utilized for the special assessments or the occupation tax or whatever it is, which is going to be the revenue source. So since the reason why it's thought that it's best to just put this first motion to rest is so that the tables then clean, as the folks in the proposed district come back with a refined plan, they start over with that and it's not mucked up with what had happened before. So that's the reason that, that it seems as though the best thing to do is to just vote it down.
Start with a clean slate. Correct. So I rescind my request.
No, he's voting to approve.
I was just looking at all these steps we have to go through. It seems like one of the first things we ought to do is simply get rid of the current BID.
But it's not on the agenda for us.
It's not on the agenda, so we just have to literally start over.
So right now, Dale's asked for a motion for approval, and I guess.
We can vote it down?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And was there a second?
Okay.
So.
We are, let's see, ready to make the call here.
Do we need a second?
Yep, we have a second.
And so are we ready to vote on approval of?
Wait, exactly what are we voting on?
You're, you're voting to approve consideration to form this BID.
Okay.
However, we don't want.
So we're going to vote, okay, gotcha.
Red lighted.
I just have one quick question I'd like to ask Connie. I got an email today Connie from Downtown Merchant, and I've been getting a lot of them and stuff. Is it still the thing that we're going to do is you're going to try and send out a survey and have them vote, or? I know you had a meeting the other night, I got several calls after that meeting. Where are you going to go from here, or do you know yet?
We weren't planning to do the survey. You know, I mean, we can, but I guess right at this point, what we had discussed at the last city council meeting was that we were to have the town hall and bring back to you what we found out at the town hall, and that's what we did with this report. And from that, I guess, we felt that people were telling us that, for the most part, they were in favor of it, that they didn't like the way we were assessing it. So we wanted, what we want to do is revisit the way that we are assessing it. Come back with a new plan to assess it.
Okay. I just got a few emails that are saying vote no, and I don't really know if that's the way you had it or the way you're going to do it, so we may have to, I may have to revisit some of these people and see what, if they are up to date on it or behind or what they're doing, so that's why I ask. Thank you.
And I think too, this is really giving you the same thing, it's just giving you a little more time to come back, and so it really would be doing the same thing.
Right.
I just want to get your feeling on that.
We needed more information to be able to figure out a new way to assess it.
Okay.
And we didn't have that information at our last meeting to do that. We've got the information now, tomorrow we'll have a meeting a little bit.
Great. Connie, is your plan then to have another town hall meeting to communicate this new system to the people affected?
What, I guess, what would you like us to do? How would, you know, we weren't planning.
The way I see it right now is I think you just start all over and come back to us, and then with the council allowing direction then, would be my recommendation.
That's where I thought we were at.
Yep, yep. So at this point, what we need to do is vote to rid of it to allow you to start over. All right?
That would be correct.
Please vote.
All council persons voting against the motion, motion fails.
Okay, thanks for being here Connie. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, next is consideration of ordinance 5117 authorizing the sale of property at 714 South 11th that the city acquired with Community Development, block grant funds to Sid Sedback.
Your Honor, I would move consideration of ordinance 5117 on first reading.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay. Discussion? Matt, do you have anything you want to tell us about this?
Really what you, on the consent agenda on item 16 was the, was the subrecipient agreement by which Mr. Sedback agreed to comply with the provisions of the grant related to this property. This property is a vacant piece of property, and so the ordinance that is before you would allow for the sale of that property to Mr. Sedback, at that point in time, he would then construct a house and sell it to an individual meeting the income requirements of the grant, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
One question, can we pass this on three reading? That would be great.
Okay.
Let's take one at a time. Any other discussion at all?
We can do that.
If not, short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to authorize the sale of city property, to provide the terms of sale and authorize the mayor to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed to the property, to provide for remonstrance to said sale as provided by law, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. If you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5117 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules on pass ordinance 5117 on second and third.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend second and third reading rules. If you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5117 carries on second and third.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is a little bit of budget discussion and some direction here from council to staff and our city administrator. So, city administrator, I'll let you start the discussion there.
Well, it's our goal to gain a little bit more direction from the council. We have shared with you the preliminary budget, or anticipated budget through the Long Range Financial Plan a couple of weeks ago in the work session. At this point, we have our departmental budgets in, but before we start slicing and dicing and making modifications to that, we would like to know what the target is that you as a council have for our budget this year. We do know that we have a, an increase in the LB-840 for $400,000, that's about a $36 increase per $100,000 home. That was approved by the voters in May. What we're talking about is the operations side of the budget. And, you know, at this point, we can bring you whatever you as a council would like to see, we just want to know, I would like to know where to lead the staff in achieving whatever your target is. Again, the number that we have based on the Long Range Financial Plan is 300,000 at this point.
Say that again.
The number in the Long Range Financial Plan that we shared with you at the work session was a $300,000 increase in the operations side of the budget.
And what percent was that? Do you remember? Close.
Thirty-two.
Okay. No, that wouldn't be right.
The operations increase just on its own would be at 28.
Twenty-eight.
Well, it'll be 32 when you get the 6 percent add number, so that's both.
Okay, thank you. And that does not include the LB-840? The LB-840 is above that?
Yes. Again, the portion of the budget that we're talking about is just the, you know, the operations side. The Long Range Financial Plan does show the LB-840 included in that as approved by the, by the voters. What our concern is, is where do we, what do we bring back to you in that operations budget? What is the target that you as a council have for where we go? And, you know, at this point, it's down from last year, we, when we were trying to read our crystal ball, looking forward, it looked like a $500,000 increase with new information and the changes that have happened over the course of the year, that number's actually 300,000, so it is significantly lower. But we haven't set that target as to where, where do you want this year's budget to be at?
It's a loaded question. That percentage that you gave, that you asked for, Dave? What was that for? That number that you gave was 20-some percent, I think I heard you say, Dennis? What, what percentage of what? I'm confused.
That is the increase in the property tax levy. What percentage increase is there in the levy to reach that $300,000?
Okay, on that.
That he wants to raise taxes.
That would be, and I don't have the number in front of me, about 6 cents? Just over 6 cents.
Okay.
Currently at 19.6, and that would take us to right at 26 cents under that scenario, under the $300,000 scenario.
Input, counsel?
William. It's kind of tough, I think, until you see the whole budget, and, and, you know, I hate to, I hate to say, you know, we can only, we cannot exceed something until you see what, what has to go, you know, to meet that, and, I guess I have some ideas about on the expense side, but I just soon do the deal that when we deal with the budget and so on. So I guess I don't really feel like I want to set a level necessarily.
I don't, I don't think we can maybe positively give him a number tonight, but I would like to see it significantly lower than what he just said. Having the LB-840 on there already, we're going to, the taxpayers have already voted to have a pretty good jump. I don't really want to add much to that, so I would ask you to come down lower, and I don't know how much lower yet, but that's, that's just my 2 cents on that, maybe 2 cents?
Down 2 cents?
Two, 2 cents.
Oh, excuse me, Dave, I misunderstood.
Can't give at all.
That, my initial reaction would be similar to Dave's, you know, last, last budget year, we almost doubled, almost doubled the levy, and now with the citizens coming forward and supporting the LB-840, they basically voted for their own tax income. and supporting the LB-840, they basically voted for their own tax increase. I appreciate the work that the staff does on the budget, and I guess I would challenge them to try to get that number down. I understand that there are challenges, just like every business, but I would really feel more comfortable, you know, ideally, if we could get zero, but I know that's probably not something that we're going to be able to build consensus on as a council, but I really would like to see that number lower.
And I think that would show good faith, because the citizens did vote their own tax raise. Now, if we try and tighten our bell a little more to help that out, I think it shows good faith on our part, so.
And just for clarification, I'm not asking the council to set the budget, obviously, tonight, and Ivan, I understand your concern. What I would like to do is just understand what would the council, I mean, what are you hearing, what are you seeing? We want to bring a budget proposal forward that's going to be as close to that as possible, at which time we can show you what are the implications. I mean, when we come down from, you know, from that number, there's always unintended consequences. Where is that, what is that doing? What do we have to give up? And that's okay, as long as we give you the facts as to what stays and what goes when we get to that point. We understand that. But what I would like to do is, instead of bringing you a number of 300,000 and then having, you know, the comments of, no, that's too high, where would you like to see it? So when we bring it forward, we're getting close to where you want it to be. You still have three budget hearings. We've moved this up this year so that you have three individual hearings, if you choose to adopt it. So we have lots of time to review that, Ivan, and you should have that. I mean, there's a lot of material in here, and a lot of things that can be addressed, as long as we understand that there's a pro and con to each one of them.
I think, I think for me, that would be a nice way to look at it, you know. I'd like to see it a lot lower, too, but what are we going to lose, you know, the lower it gets? What do we, you know, what are we going to have to give up? And so, I mean, I, I have to commend the voters for, for trust that they, they put in the city, and the LB-840 thing, I think that was a, a big step for a lot of the citizens, you know. So I guess let's, let's see how low we can get it and what we're going to lose by, by getting it lower, so.
I think the big thing is, I mean, there's probably nobody here in the council that's going to say, oh, I wish it was higher, but, I mean, we all would like to see it lower. The big thing in that increase is the majority of it's all going to be personnel costs, correct?
Well, the personnel cost, the human capital, if you will, would be the single largest percentage of, of the entire general fund budget. I mean, so I can't tell you the increase is. Last year, you took a very significant step in correcting some inequities within our pay system, and I commend you for doing that. I know that that was a difficult step last year. I know we had a lot of, a lot of discussion about that. What we found this year is, we appear to be pretty well in line. Now, what are the communities doing? We're in the process of trying to determine that. If we, if we're careful, we can maintain that. That, is that a portion of it? Absolutely. But we don't have those big increases, those big adjustments that we would have to do to, to maintain that comparability that we fought last year to make sure we maintained. That's the good news.
If I remember correctly, last year it was somewhere, some departments got 7%, correct?
In some areas, I think it was in that 7% range, that's correct.
Right, so.
Because they had fallen so far down in that comparability.
No, I understand that, right. I mean, we don't want to drop, we can, you know, start the process over and start falling back again.
What?
But I know a lot of, a lot of state agencies are freezing wages, you know, at least for upper management, or, you know, even just, you know, the average citizen working at affiliated foods, or wherever. You're not getting the increases that they've had in the past, and so I, I would like to see how that affects us as well on the budget side.
The, what I will tell you about the salary, the salary piece in there, now, at this point, you know, that's been a generic number. We're working closer, you know, to fine tune that for you as we bring it forward, but if you take a little chunk at a time, you can maintain that comparability. If you, I mean, if you, if we do nothing, we start to lose that again, and we're going to be back there very quickly in the position of, now you have to make those big jumps. And what we're trying to do with every aspect of the budget is, is minimize those negative impacts in every area, whether it be the, the capital improvement plan, or in the compensation package. Any, any piece of the budget that we can stabilize, that's what we've done. Again, last year, you did a big piece in doing that. What we're trying to do is minimize any of those, those big increases or swings in the, in the levy.
Good.
Now, where does that put us? Eric, we don't have that, I don't have that tonight. I know that our goal is to, to keep that as flat as we can. So I appreciate that.
Well, I think we're in a position where we almost have to see what the department budgets consist of. There are things that we need to do, and then there are things that we'd like to do, and then, of course, there's the dream things. But I think before we can really establish a number of where we want to go, we have to know what these need things are, as far as our departments are concerned, before we can really set a goal. The $300,000 level is probably not excessive, but we don't know what we might have to look at in regard to something above that for things that are really desirable, not necessarily needed, but really desirable things that we have to look at. And I can look at some things and think about sort of areas in the city that are going to have to have some improvement that we have to take into consideration.
Absolutely, and understand, in the preliminary look at the individual budgets of the departments, there are some things in there that, that we can probably argue about necessity versus what makes sense, but I will tell you, there's no fluff in, in that initial budget. That's part of my concern in going through that, and we're in the process of putting that into the, into the overall budget, but there's not a lot of fluff in there. So, you know, part of my concern is, we can keep trimming back, and, and, again, you know, if we say that it has to be lower, Dave, I'm all for that. I just want to make sure that when we bring it to you, we show you what is it that, that's going away.
And, and don't misunderstand me, you know, I'm not saying to keep it at zero to spite ourselves, so next year it's 50 again, and I don't want to cut one of the guys out of something they really need, you know, to, to keep it at that level. But with all the things that are going on, I'd like to keep it as low as I can, and I know you're doing a good job. I think you've cut some, some things this year, and I don't mean cut out of the budget. I mean, you've, you've done some surveys and some savings, and created some things that have saved the city a lot of money, and I appreciate that. You know, possibly, if you could cut back on this and find a way to cut a little more without losing anything, we'd be further ahead. So I'd, I'd like to see you explore that and maybe, maybe challenge some of the other heads of the offices to, to save some more money like they already have this year and see what we can do.
Well, we have made some changes in, with our internal operations that have changed, saved a pretty significant amount of, of money, redirected some of our investments. We've invested in some technology that, over the long run, is going to save us a significant amount of, of time and money, and I commend all of the department heads because they've been working on that, on that challenge. What I would, what I think I'm hearing is, bring us something less than 300, but show us what it is that, that stays and what goes, and, and I think we can do that. Again, the concern that I have is, we're, we're going to come up on a July 13th town hall meeting where the, where the budget will be presented to the public, and I want to make sure that the council is, is at least somewhat comfortable with what we're presenting at that town hall meeting before we roll it out on the, on the big screen. So we will share those, those preliminary numbers with you as we get that finalized. We'll, we'll see what we can come up with, you know, again, what I've heard is less than 300.
You've heard two, two cents, two, 300,000, so you have a gap.
Two cents on the levy.
Two cents on the period. But, well, we'd like to see you start at zero and then show us why we got to do more, and so, same difference, it's coming backwards. And you'll do a good job. I'm not questioning that at all, so.
My feeling is, we certainly don't want to get into a fall back position. We want to get into a position where it's still a forward-looking community, but we only want to provide the necessities and not a lot of fluff.
I understand, and I think that's very well put, Jim.
Just to kind of elaborate on, on Dave's point, too, we've kind of tried to create a relationship or some type of a trust with the voters, and they voted in this LB-840, and I think we need to do everything we can in our part to keep that down. I mean, everyone here is well aware of what's on the horizon with recreation and, and the way that, I mean, I've had calls and comments on that already. They know that's out there looming, and they've given us their vote of trust, and we don't want to abuse that. So I have total trust in staff that they're going to do what they feel is prudent for the community and keep us moving forward.
I appreciate that, and I do, again, I want to commend the staff. They have consistently, year after year, maintained a very frugal budget, and that's tough to do. And I think what you're finding this year is, it's no different. Jim, I mean, Jim's comment of, you know, we have some things that we need to provide, we don't want to slide too far backward, and that, that would be my concern. There are a lot of issues that have to be addressed so that, so that does not happen, but we will bring you something less than 300 and over two cents.
Thank you.
So, in round dollars, what are we talking, then? Something, what's, what's the target going to be? Is it going to be 200,000, or is it going to be 300? I know it's not going to be the 300. Is it going to be two and a half? Or, you know, as we're back at the same, same spot, unless we give them some direction, you know, and I think that's what you're asking for. Well, it's a lot easier if we know what the target is, understanding that you can't, we're not asking for a vote on it. I, I don't want to suggest that we voted on it, now we're done with that. This is, what are we bringing forward to you? And it is a lot easier with a target. I would like to say to our staff, they're going, they're, they will bring you whatever it is that you ask for. If it's, you know, 150 or 200,000, that's what we'll bring you, and we'll show you why that does or does not work. Dave, if it's zero, we'll show you what, what disappears and what we're not doing with that, and it doesn't make it a right or a wrong answer. I don't want this to be right and wrong. This is simply of, you know, how, how far do you want staff to, to whittle into this, I mean, into this challenge? Because we can do that. We can bring you what it is that you want to see on that, on that preliminary budget, and again, what we roll out initially.
You know, Eric's a lot braver than I am, but I've been thinking a little bit along Eric's line. You know, the governor made the big to-do about the state government workers freezing salaries and so on, and, and you do hear a lot of people in the private sector saying, you know, I haven't had a raise in three years, or two years, or whatever. I guess I would like to almost see the staff take a look at, and I'm just throwing out figures here, nothing sacred about any of these, but looking at maybe our employees who are making more than 30,000 a year, and saying, what happens if we would freeze all those salaries above that point? And what would it do? How much would it save us? And I just, and I know we don't want to slip back, but I think it would be a good gesture for the taxpayer who says, if they're going to ask us for this recreational bonds and things, you know, that we're all, we're all willing to suffer a little bit, and I'll be the first one to say, I'll give up a month's and pay mine on the council. Anyway, I just, and, and I certainly don't want to, you know, get everybody shocked and say, my goodness, but I think we ought to look at the numbers. What, what would it do? And maybe it's not enough to get excited about, I don't know.
Just for clarification, so I understand that when we say freeze those salaries, are we talking about freezing the steps or freezing the colas?
I would say both. They're just, same pay next year as they got this year. And then, then again, I, I think, you know, if you've got people working for 18, 20,000, they probably going to have to have more money just to live. But if you're making 80,000, like the city attorney, and, don't quote that, by the way. You know, he maybe could live for next year on 80, you know, whatever. I'm just throwing out some figures.
Now, I would, I would share with you, Ivan, I'd be happy to bring that information to you. When we, when we delve into the budget, I would ask that you identify what it is that the, the taxpayers are going to be paying. What is your target? I think that staff has earned the, the respect of the council, from what I've heard here, and the community, to do a good job of, of being prudent with those dollars. We'll bring you the budget, but I'd ask that you give us the latitude to, to bring you the solution. I think that, that there's a lot of things in that solution that, that make sense, and I won't dispute one way or the other whether or not that's the, the right one. I'd be happy to share that information with you, but I think that staff has the ability to bring you the solutions that, that you need, if we know what it is that we're shooting for. A lot of creativity, what I've found over the last year with our staff, I challenged our staff to, to a pretty lofty goal for how we can improve the efficiencies within our operation, and they took some very, very efficient operations, and, again, with some small investments in technology, have, have made big savings for the city that are sustainable year after year. And it's just, you know, it, it, things that we can do a little bit different, and I want to give them credit, because they, they've stepped up and, and they have met that challenge. I would ask that you let us bring you the solution. I, I think that we can do that, Ivan, and I appreciate your concern, but again, if our goal is to keep the city on an even keel, financially stable, and in good graces with, with all of those things that we are, are charged to do by the state, or, or, you know, some, some of the things that are handed down to us through, through the state government or federal government, we'll do that. We're going to keep, keep the city solid. But again, please let us bring you the solution.
We had a letter to the editor, if you read tonight, chastising us because they couldn't believe that we're in our second year of no air conditioning in the library. So, yeah.
We're, we're vulnerable, and...
That's Mike doing his part to do the, the challenge that he gave him.
We're still working on Mike being sustainable without that air conditioning.
I don't know who wrote the letter, but it was Mike somebody, I did, no.
We, we understand the need, Ivan and Eric, Dale, I mean, we understand the, the significance of each piece of this, of this budget, but I will tell you that even beyond what I understand in the budget, each one of these department heads knows their budget intimately, and I would rely on them first to, to bring us some of those solutions. They, they know what, what we're going to give up on each piece of it, and, and so we're working together on that as, as a management team. I will come back and say, you know, if you're comfortable giving us a target to bring you, I'd still prefer to do that so that we know what it is that you have in mind. And I understand that it's a, it's a big step out there, but again, that would, that would be the easiest way for us to, to come back and, and meet your expectations.
I think that's, that's hard for us to do right now, at least for me, is, is to just say, okay, and I think that target's 200,000, because it might be 200,000, and we're getting an extra road greater that maybe, you know, we could have held off for a year, or something. So I'm just saying, if, if you don't want solutions, you just want a number right now, what's, you know, we're 300,000, or we're at zero, what are we going to lose at zero? What do we need to have? And, I don't know cafeteria list, or whatever, but, you know, I'm not comfortable saying the number's 200,000. I'm comfortable saying the number's zero, and tell us, you know, what do we have to have, and why we have to have those increases? And if zero's not going to work, and it has to be 100,000, tell us why.
So is that what you're suggesting, Eric? Is that we start at zero?
Yeah.
And, and put it out there as far as why?
And I, I would concur with that. I'd shoot him the number at zero, because we're trying to save the taxpayers' money. So I'd say start at zero. If he can prove to me that we need to go to 100,000, I'd vote for 100,000. If, if he can only prove to me that possibly 50,000, you know, then I'll do with that. But if, if it, if it is 300,000 right now, I can't support that. So I am, I am saying, let's do zero, and, and then let's see what he's got when he comes back to us that, that we do absolutely need, and if it is something we absolutely need, then I'll, then I will vote for it.
I'm not going to disagree with what you're saying. However, please remember... However, please remember that sometimes you have to spend money to make money.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll, I will say that I do disagree with what you're saying and that's no big deal at all.
Somebody would.
But I guess how I would like to see it, and I don't know if the rest of this group would or not, you know, because basically you arrived at the three hundred thousand of staff and that arrived at the three hundred thousand via, I mean, we didn't just throw a dart in the air.
The three hundred thousand is in the long-range financial plan.
Okay.
It is not based on the, the budget numbers necessarily that we just received. This is the long-range financial plan where we looked into the, into the future and said...
We, all of us?
We.
We.
Staff.
Yeah.
And, and shared with, with the council. It's the big picture. It's, it's, Dennis uses the analogy of the, the supertanker and, and that kind of ebbs and flows. It doesn't have any real big swings in, in that number up and down as things change. It's just that long-range financial plan. It's the vision piece. Now, from that number, we'll delve into the specific numbers of, of what is it going to take to maintain our current operations specifically? And, and that's what we're in the middle of right now. The reason that I wanted to visit with you tonight at a council meeting instead of a work session is, you know, if we can get some feeling for where the council's at, so that when I start digging into individual department numbers and, and needs within each department, it gives me a, a way to prioritize those, those needs and, and how significant are those, those items in each one of the budgets? There is no fluff in there.
Right.
I will tell you, every department has trimmed down to, you know, we can look at Scott and Shane and say, well, how many feet of fire hose do we replace this year? And, and those are the types of things that we need to talk about internally to, to our operation. We know we have to replace some. Now, will they hold water? Well, they're holding water today or they wouldn't be on the truck. How long will they hold the water? And, and those are the kinds of things that we want to make sure that we're addressing.
Well, and that's what I was getting at and that's why I was, you know, I just don't believe that a zero is, is rational doing that, that way. And, you know, I, the, you know, we established the three hundred basically two years ago when we were progressing forward with this, trying not to get those great, big spikes that you get when, when we just keep waylaying things. And, and I know, I know the, you know, the sentiment is to, to stay away from the, from the three hundred probably, you know, I guess if I were telling you what I believe we ought to shoot for is, tell me what two hundred gives me and what the extra hundred gets me. You know, don't, don't totally scrap it out of it, don't say, you know, but if I give, if I give you the leeway to go for the two hundred at this point in time here now, then tell me what the extra hundred gets me on that. On a, on a light side, also be able to tell me when, when we're visiting about this at the future date, you know, and I, I don't think we can go to the zero, but if, if everybody's set that we got to go to the zero, tell me what we lose then, too. But in all reality, I, I just see the two hundred as being a fairly solid spot to start at, you know, and, and yeah, what's it going to do? It's going to be eighteen dollars a hundred. If four hundred's thirty-six, eighteen is two hundred, so that would be very, very close.
Hey, Jim, and I don't, I don't want to argue with you because you're right, you know, we're all right on what we're saying, but remember, they're, they're getting fifty-five million. They're not starting at zero, they're getting fifty-five million to spend. We're just talking about giving them three hundred thousand more. If they can't do something with fifty-five million, you know, and, and they're doing a lot, but I'm just saying, remember that.
I think you're a little bit strong on that number.
I wish it was fifty-five million, but.
What is our budget?
In the general fund?
Yeah, well.
Be about sixteen?
Altogether.
Well, the, the part that we're talking about is the general fund.
Just the general fund, okay. Sixty-five million, but I mean, there's a lot out there that's going on. So I just want to remind everybody, we're not starting with zero, you know.
Where did you get to sixty-five? I thought you said sixteen.
Sixteen. I just want everybody to remember, we're spending money already, so they are buying hoses, they are buying road graders, they are buying trucks, so they've got a lot of money they're already spending, but remember, we're just adding to it, so we're not cutting them down to nothing, we're just trimming them back a little. But I'm not disagreeing with you because I want to see what's in that three hundred thousand, too, before I absolutely say no, so.
Well, may I, may I offer, in the interest of time and getting you home, let me bring you a budget at a hundred and fifty thousand? I'm going off of what Tim's suggestion was.
Stop it, me.
Let me, let me bring you a budget at a hundred and fifty thousand and I'll show you what happens going both directions on, on the hundred and fifty. Does that, does that a...
He's chopping your fifties, adding a hundred and fifty to mine, so don't feel bad.
Okay. Well, I was using Eric's analogy of we've got two ends of the spectrum here, and I think there's going to be some pretty significant items going both directions, and it'll depend on, you know, again, clearly, we know that you have to review this, you have to come back and revisit it. I just want a starting point that we all agree on is a good place for us to start that discussion. And if you'll let me start at the hundred and fifty, again, there, there's no secrets here, we can show you exactly what happens on both ends of that equation, and I think you'll find them to be pretty significant.
That was going to be my suggestion, but you beat me to it, so.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I guess I just want to remind us, as we talk about the LB eight forty, I think it's a very positive force. We've heard some positive comments from our friends in Lincoln about the fact that Norfolk, Nebraska stepped up to the plate and went forward with the LB eight forty. There's some groups out there that are working very hard. I look at the Dream It Do It group that has just come to life because they are so positive now in the sense that we have the opportunity and the abilities to start attracting what it's been that we've been saying we've wanted for a long, long time, and that's good jobs here in Norfolk. So, you know, I just want us to remember, where we're going right now is positively forward with the city of Norfolk. And again, you know, if, if you're comfortable starting at that hundred and fifty, go for it, but let's make sure that we're, I don't want to ever step on the toes of the staff that's doing a great job and making sure that we are in place to be able to be the attraction that we want this city to be. So, good discussion. Like I say, you were asked the question. I appreciate the input and.
Hope you like the answer, don't ask it, that's...
Well, that's good.
Do I get to pick which answer?
I wouldn't move with you, Jim.
We are adjourned.
I was going to ask Dave if he's in my hat, but I thought maybe I better.